Let's get started here with our regular meeting. If y'all want to find your seat, we'll all the meeting to order. Appreciate everyone staying with us here through the work session. As always, before we start the meeting, I asked Brother Golf here to lead us in prayer, but he's got something he wants to say tonight, I think.
Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of guests with us tonight. One of them's not really a guest.
Nah.
He hangs around every once in a while, but we do have. And I know I usually say the prayer and I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance following our prayer tonight, but I'm going to ask Reverend Reese Fawcett, if we will. We have a new addition to our community and to our church community here in Dade County. And I'm going to let Brother Fawcett just tell him, tell us who he is, let him come say a few words, and then our new pastor at Trenton United Methodist Church to lead us in prayer. Go ahead, Brother Fawcett.
That's what I wanted to do. I wanted to introduce Dennis Flaher to the community, spell that F-L-A-H-E-R. And pronounce it Flaher?
We do.
Okay. And been working with Dennis as he's gotten in over the past month, and he's really excited about helping the church become more and more of an asset in this community and working with the community and being what help that we can be. But I also want to introduce him as my pastor, and it's good to have one after a while. And just thank you for letting me introduce him to you. And Dennis, if you'd like to come and pray.
Now, where's he, where's he, the pastor?
Oh, Trenton United Methodist. Robert said that.
Did he say that?
You gotta learn to listen.
I'm sorry, I was, I was, I was riding here. I just want to be slept off to sleep. Want everybody to know that.
That's how the Methodist pay attention.
Yeah, well, I know. I've been preaching to them for years.
You listen to a Baptist, see?
When they wake up, they got a lot of questions, I presume. But thank you for receiving him, and he's looking forward to working with the community. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you. Many of you have welcomed my wife Jill and myself to this community, and we really love it here. This is, this is a joy, and to be able to come on the heels of a great pastor like Reese Fawcett is just a pleasure. Because I'm trying to figure out, Reese, am I the pastor at First Baptist or at Trenton United Methodist?
United.
United Methodist, okay. It's good to know where to go to work in the morning when you get.
Eddie will be calling you in a minute. The phone will be ringing.
They're sitting on television, is it?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Just say whatever.
Eddie, that's just a small joke that I should let you know. But thank you again, and again, I want to echo what Reese said. Like all the churches in our community, we just want to help and help the town in whatever way that we can be of service to you and to you folks, please don't hesitate to call. Let me pray. God, we thank you for these men and women who have given of their time and the commitment of their resources to make this a better place to live. With all the business that is on the agenda tonight, I pray that you would lead and guide each discussion. May we truly hear what each other has to say, and may the decisions made here tonight reflect what is in the best interest of all the citizens who live both in this town and in this county. In these things, we ask, amen.
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 States flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Good job. Good job. Okay. All right, this is a regular meeting, scheduled meeting, but the Dade County Board of Commissioners takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice, this meeting was given to a legal organ of the Dade County Sentinel and has been posted on a hallway administrative building. This time, I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowery.
Here.
Hartline.
Present.
Mr. Golf.
Here.
Mr. Rafferty.
Here.
And Chair is present. Okay, thank you. Mr. Lowery, you want to start with your committee report, please?
Okay, I'll start with the 911 call sheet. We had a total of 4,649 calls through the 911 for the month of July. It just seems to keep getting higher. It was running around 3,000, and now it's up to 4,649. That's EMS, fire, and police. The total for April, May, and June, this is unbelievable for me, 13,458 calls through the 911 center. And we always, we brag on our firefighters and our police officers and our EMS crews and our road crews. Sometimes we, we forget and overlook our 911 operators. Very stressful job. You don't think about just answering the phone being stressful, but just think about what you're being asked when you're called. People are in panic mode, and their loved ones could be dying, hurt bad. You're their rescuer, you're their saver. So there's a lot of pressure on those folks. We have a little turnover back there, and it takes a while to train a good 911 operator. So really want to say thank you to our 911 staff. Alex does a great job with them.
I'm a small part of that, sir.
You're a small part, but you're, you're the leader, so let them know we appreciate them. Now, I'm the, I work at a medical facility, so I just want to report on the COVID a little bit. I know a lot of people thinking it's not serious, but, and it's political. But what I can tell you is out of six hospitals in Chattanooga, there are 151 patients in those six hospitals. 60 of those are in the ICU, so they're in pretty critical shape. 26 of them are on ventilators. That's today. That's today's numbers. Yesterday was a little, about one or two higher, but that's today's numbers. So I just want to encourage everybody to wear your mask when you can't stay your social distance. And it's always good, I mean, to wear, clean your hands, wash your hands. We talked about that for years, even if it was just the flu we were looking at. But try to social distance, wash your hands, wear your mask, do what you can to help prevent the spread. We know we're not going to stop it. We're trying to slow the spread so we don't overrun our healthcare system. So I think that's about all I have, sir.
All right, you had a report tomorrow. Mr. Hartline.
Down at the sports complex, it's been pretty busy the last few weeks or few months for Stacey. They're finishing up this week, they should finish up the chain link fences from the tornado damage. They've started putting the roofs on the new dugouts. We've got three different groups of people wanting to start holding tournaments quick as we get the facility back up and running. We've got 18 and over adult baseball. We've got a guy that wants to do softball tournaments. And then we've also got the coed, coed softball starting up, fixing to start. Stacy's got rec football going on right now, and they're finishing up rec softball signups. So he's got a lot of stuff coming up, fixing to start. I've got a project that I took over for myself for the facility. I've got with Bob Woods, General Bob Woods. We're working on doing a memorial for the military. We're looking at maybe installing a 60-foot American flag and then dropping down and doing a 40-foot military flag half circle. We're going to do it with private donations. That's something that I'm excited about. Let's see. I know Stacy's had, like you said, he had some new, a new hire down there to start. We did, we got a new lawnmower in. They got the soccer fields, they finally got them top dressed, so when everything gets finished, we should be good to go on our tournaments.
Yeah, they've been moving on that sand. What about on the, on the finished product of the bleachers and all that? You looking at, you got a timeline on it?
On the dugouts.
On the dugout, sorry, I said bleachers, dugouts and all the.
Yeah, he's on the roof right now. I think he's got two or three he's got started on, but there's, I think we ended up with eight dugouts that we ended up completely rebuilding and redoing. So we're hoping within the next week and a half to two weeks, we should have them complete.
They're going to be nice.
And that was because of storm damage, right?
Yes, storm damage. And plus, while they've got it torn out, we're doing some drainage work down. It's been needing since it was built, really. It's going to take a lot of that water off the field, you know, and put it out where it needs to be. So that's why it's all torn up, it's time to do it, you know. So good report there. Y'all got a lot going on down, I know that. Robert?
I am happy to report, and I was just saying, you're thinking, as, you know, Commissioner Lowery talks about all the calls to 911 and Philip talking about our rec league ballpark where all of our kids congregate and have such a great time, and I know Alan will probably mention our transfer station. All of these things are possible through the generosity of our county, through our taxes that we pay. And I am, I say that to say this, I am happy to report because this is our, I think this is our biggest test of our splosh since COVID started. Because I don't think there was one of us that didn't think that in the beginning of it, this could hurt us financially. But again, splosh this month was $212,000, $212,189. And of course, that is twice with the lost. It is 169,751, that's the same thing with 20% of that going to the city. And that is the help that we get. The lost directly affects the millage, it affects our property taxes directly. The splosh is money that's used for all these things. We talk about it more, we have Rodney Ross with the fire departments back here, the equipment that they use, sheriff's vehicles, ambulance, as you name it, everything is touched by that penny. And I just want to thank people, especially our businesses in Trenton, we're praying for them, and many of them are back open. We have Ms. York back here, Janet York from Larry's Restaurant, they're up, open back up. Buffet's ready, hot and good, Thursday through the weekend, as always, and we want to keep it that way. Janet, we thank y'all for what you do and providing in our, in our county. But all of our businesses and our drive-throughs throughout this whole thing have helped keep Dade County on top of things, so I appreciate it. So that's all that I've got to say, but it's great to report that in this first real month, I think, or second month into thing, because we're, we're reporting for two months, money from two months ago. So that was great. And thank you, Dade County, and we'll just continue to grow out of this thing, and we will be back to normal.
I hope, hope it's same. Mr. Rafferty?
Well, it's been kind of a quiet month for me. I only have to go about two miles to see where all my workers are at, that's at Lookout Lake. And I don't know how many of you live out there, I have seen what's going on with it, but it's really catastrophe-looking thing, but it's going to get better as time goes on. And I even told people at my church I was going to change churches, because so many people talked to me about that lake. But anyway, it's looking better every day, and things are beginning to look more and more like the lake, and I think the water's going to come back up a lot more than what we anticipated when we first started this position. But I've got some pictures on my phone, if anybody wants to see them after the meeting, welcome to come up. But most of our guys have been out there, but they are still doing jobs from place to place that they can do. But Billy has spent a lot of time, we'll have guys that stay out there at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night. And Mr. Hartline, I wonder the night at 7:00, he was still pounding on rock. Not this Hartline, but his brother. But I mean, it's just amazing what these guys are doing with this dam. But it's looking better every day, and the more gravel they put in, more sand, it makes me feel better, because that means it's coming back up. So it's been a very tough month for us over there on that thing, so it's looking pretty good. I think we have six months total to finish it on with Ted.
Six months, we got about, about four and a half months to finish. We were ahead of schedule, we were way ahead of.
We got about four months left to finish, and I think that's going to happen. But anyway, it's looking good, and I hope that people are more understanding and think it's looking pretty good, it's not as bad as it's going to be. Down at transfer, down at transfer station, we transferred 796 tons of garbage. You wonder where all that garbage came from in Dade County, we have such a small county. But anyway, that's what we're doing about average in a month now, I think, because most people are home because of the virus, they're cleaning, I know my wife's got me cleaning everything. But anyway, people are getting rid of things they normally wouldn't get rid of. But Lamar said something about all these calls and to the office in there, 911. Can you imagine these people in New York and Portland, places like that, when they call, they can't even get an officer? I mean, just imagine what that's going to be like. They have no way to get no help. And I have a lot of relatives living in Portland, they have left Portland and gone on up into Washington State. But it's amazing what's going on, the other cutting, the things that are happening in the United States. But we have a great 911 system here, and like Lamar said, someday, if you just want to go in there and sit and listen to it, it's unreal how those girls, guys keep up with that thing. I'd go crazy. But they do a great job in there, and that's a lot of phone calls. That's about all I've got.
All right, good report. That's one of the reasons we have so much turnover in 911, too, because it's really a mental stress, mentally stressing job, you know, and some people think they can do it, and then after, you know, just a few weeks, you can tell, you know, you can't, you know. It's a different world in it, Alex. Different, you know. And okay, I'm moving into my report. We've had a, really a busy month, and it's went by really quick, don't seem like it should be August, but we've had, as Alan said, we've had the lake project, we got it going, and it's going wide open. Had the DNR out there, they were out there the day before yesterday. We had the water quality people with the, with EPD and also the EPD person that actually is over the erosion and all, and which we're a state fishing authority, but I like to have these people come in and inspect us to make sure that everything's right, because, you know, we are the government, but we're doing a government job. Anyway, and it looked great, you know, everything's fine. We got aerators there in the water to protect the fish, to give them oxygen, you know, to, we've got, you know, got it down, if you've been by there, real low. And, but there's about, I think it's about 12, 14 feet out there in the middle, and the front line guy from DNR said, well, those two aerators said they shouldn't be in problem at all, you know, and not whatsoever. So anyway, so that's, that's happening out there, and like Alan said, they're moving on with it, working long hours. We want to get in there and get it done and get out of there, you know, so. And they should start, the pipe was delivered about two hours ago out there, a siphon pipe, it's on the ground now, and they should start laying that probably Monday morning. And that's, then after that, we'll go in and start forming the box cover. And so it's, if the weather, if Mother Nature lets us along and the rain and all, we'll, in the next two weeks, you're going to really see a lot happen, you know, out there. The, Alex has already had to carry his act and the grant funds on here. That's a big deal for us, I'm not going to go into that because he, he did explain all that, but it is a win-win for every county that actually has received this money, or every state. And it's up to the state to divide it into the counties, and that's, goes right back to this census we're talking about. That's the way they do that. They go in there and they look at our per capita, which is our head count. Walker County got 1. what million? 2.7 million. Of course, they're a larger county than us, but they don't go by landmass, they go by people.
(inaudible).
Yeah, so, you know, that, the times like this is when you really want a true head count in your county, you know, because that's, that's, that's what, that's what they go by. And they go by the census, and they don't. So anyway, that's, I just thought I'd throw that in there, because it is important. Alex and I have, we've done several Zoom meetings this month on different things. Our seat of regional commission, chief elected officials, and now they're doing all their meetings as, you know, on the computer through Zoom. I did get notified today, we're probably going to do our first regional commission meeting this month on the third Thursday, and we're going to have a, actually, it'll be an open meeting in Rome. They've got the, because we got to do the social distancing, so that's going to be a kind of a pretty big deal, because we've not met in person in months, but there's some things we've got to do, and so that's going to be interesting. There's about 60 people attend those. One commissioner and one mayor from every county north of Atlanta, and it's a, it's a pretty big deal. So that's going to be different, but we're living in some different times. I mean, you know, the, I did mention, too, on August the 18th, we will have a special call meeting with the school board to actually agree to collect those taxes. Most of you were here during the work session when I mentioned that. The big news is, though, and we spent a lot of time on this, Becca, everyone involved in, is the millage rate. And I keep saying that because it's something to be proud of, you know, we, we actually, our millage rate, you know, for 2020 was eight, for the unincorporated area, which is the county, it was 8.007, and we actually, you know, decreased it to 0.226, which, you know, that's, that's big. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's, that's not something that you just write down. It took a lot of hard work and a lot of, a lot of people involved, sheriff's department, our fire departments, everyone involved that we fund. You know, our public works director and public works, parks department, they, you know, they really want their money, they want their dollars. And we also, I mean, and, and that's what we are, we're the governing body, we oversee that, so we, you know, so that's, that's, that's really good news. The city, they were at 10.801, and now it's, they went down to 0.147. They went down that, that much, which is not a lot, but it is going the right way. So, you know, we, we just, we just appreciate everyone working with us, and I appreciate my commissioners, you know, I mean, more than y'all know. Let's see here now. There's one other thing, oh, yeah. County Road 6, you know, that's Mr. Hartline's district, that's something I want to mention, we're going to mention at every meeting until we get started. I hope not this next week, the week after, we can get, go ahead and at least get a road cut down into the bottom of that, that slide up there, and, because that's the first step we got to do, is get an entry into it, and we'll get set up, and they can actually start some drilling. We won't shut the road down right then, but we'll get set up. Well, when we do shut it down, we're ready to go with it. For y'all that don't know, that don't use County Road 6, it's a shortcut road up here on Sand Mountain. We got the biggest part of it fixed years, several years ago by building a wall, but we got to tie into that wall down below, and that'll, that'll take care of the rest of it. At that time, it wasn't sliding, but it is, it's come on down. So with that, we'll have to add about 250 feet onto that, and hopefully we'll, we'll have that taken care of. Also, Morgan Ridge Road, we, we got that thing back up today, we got it, just temporary, but it's back. Billy and then one up there spent some time this morning. That road up on the, on the top of it, if you've traveled that road, it's sliding also. Won't be near, not quite as a larger project as County Road 6, but we've got to get County Road 6 fixed, so it's going to be the first project we do, and then we'll move up there before winter sets in, and we'll, we'll get that fixed up there also. So I just want to give you an update on all those. If you've got any questions about them, you can call my cell number, and most people will know it, 667-8999, and we'll, we'll talk about it. Y'all got anything else that kind of burning on your mind that you need to, before we move on? Okay, all right. We'll move on down to the appearances, and Mr. Alex Case, the city of Trenton, mayor of city of Trenton, he's putting another hat on there where he can talk to us about city.
We meet again, we meet this Monday, is our regular scheduled meeting. We'll be talking about CARES Act as well, which the city received $33,780 for 30% and 112,600, and we've talked with auditor, our lawyer, and commission what we're doing, and we're going to be doing something through, you know, our lobby's wide open, just come in, plop up to a counter and can walk right in our clerk's office, kind of like we here. We're going to build that back, we've submitted that in on the portal from the grants, so we're working diligently. We're also giving our first preliminary 21 budget to the commission. We'll be scheduling a workshop later in the month, and hopefully in our September meeting, approve our budget and set our millage. We may have a special, the special call meeting may follow with a millage set, so we're working. Santa Jenkins, our city clerk, is working with Angie, and we've done a couple, as you know, insurance, workers' comp, other things that we're looking at, general liability stuff, so we're still getting those numbers in from GMA. So please be there, we'll, we'll be there to do that, and city's been working good, I think they've, we've got a new worker in Public Works, and he's been working on the sidewalks up in the mornings of getting them cleaned up, and we've done a little cleaning down on the south end of South Main Street where it turns back into the county at Cedar Lane, where we could see the sign. We had Daniel Case's group mulched all that trees and mulched down outside of the right way a little bit. So appreciate all the city workers, and just like anything, it's a very small part of that, just glad to be working with a great commission. Please come out to our meeting Monday.
Any questions for Alex? None? Okay, thank you. I want to clarify, too, that when I said the county, you know, the unincorporated, which is outside the city, and I said, you know, it went down, and I also said the incorporated has, has dropped to 0.147, that is the county share of taxes that you pay in the city. Now, they control the city taxes, but, you know, people live in the city, and I know you know that without me telling you, you got a line item for your city taxes, and then you pay county taxes, too. Well, this is the county portion of it. So that's, that's, don't get confused there. And so, but you will decide your millage as far as up or down at your next meeting, right?
Our budget workshop, we've got a couple scenarios. We got numbers in today for health insurance from GMA, we're through GMA, workers' comp's going up on us, health didn't as much as we thought. We've done some preliminary estimates, what we've done, as, as you know, the way y'all work every year, so just fine tuning them down. And once we do that, and see what the rollback rate where we are, decides where we go. We're just a little bit later in doing that with y'all, because our, our budget year is physical, we're a physical year, so it's kind of tough, because our taxes, you know, what we got paid in at the end of last year was really set on a 19, and then we set it again, and you pay for 20s stuff, so it's, it's tough. It's a little backwards from what we're, I'm used to here when we're working, so we get it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Marshanna Short, Dade County Public Library.
Okay, we decided to go ahead in August, we're still going to be, our temporary hours, which is Tuesday, 10 to 6, Thursday, 10 to 6, Friday, 10 to 6, and Saturday, 10 to 2. In September, we're thinking about changing the hours and maybe extending, going back to on Wednesday. We're going to talk about that on Monday, make that decision. So just watch our Facebook page and our webpage, and, you know, we'll, we'll have those announcements on there. We are doing, summer reading's over, but people really liked the take-home kits. We had kits made where the children could take home and do an art project, so we are continuing that, so you can come by and pick your kits up, and then we'll do, every Thursday at 10:30, we'll do a live story, and the child will walk them through the project. We have some, we're working on, with Carrie, Dade Family Connections, the school, we're working on some, starting some new projects and getting some things to help with all these virtual learning, business meetings, kits that can be checked out with sound, enhancing the sound and different things that the businesses can use, projectors, things like that, because all this virtual stuff is going on. So we're working on some of that through some grants and things. May I have any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
All right.
Good report, thank you. Ms. Sarah Dyer, UGA extension.
Always, thanks for the opportunity to come here and tell you what we've been doing and what we have coming up. Thank you, Rebecca, for the PowerPoint. So if you followed along with us this summer, you'll know that we did the road trip and across the USA series, and that has been. So this past month in July, Allison broke the southeast down into two different categories to walk through places to see, foods to try, as well as in July, we went through Washington, DC, and Georgia. So again, that was a really good series, that if you missed it, it is available on our Facebook page and on our new YouTube page, so this is something parents at home thinking of curriculum or ideas, this is a resource you can go to on YouTube, Dade County 4H, and you can use these videos. So upcoming for our August series for Facebook, we are going to walk through the different judging teams that we offer throughout the year in 4H, in a normal year. Things are a little wonky right now, but typically in the summertime, we offer land judging. In the fall, we offer forestry judging, and then in the spring, we have a poultry judging and livestock judging team. So these are opportunities for youth to come after school, they can be homeschool students, virtual students, in-school students, whichever, but youth in our county can come to the Ag Center after school, on weekends, we do different things, different activities for each of these clubs and judging teams. So we did meet with Dr. Harris last week to determine how 4H will fit into the schools this year. So I know many of you are probably familiar that 4H does have a presence in our schools here in Dade County, but I know folks at home or potentially in this room don't realize that. So we do typically, Allison Henderson, who is our 4H educator, she goes into every fourth grade class at the elementary schools and every fifth grade class, and throughout the month, she provides different curriculums. So we met with Dr. Harris to determine how could we serve the school system this year and reach those age levels that we've always traditionally reached. So what we've come up with is actually in collaboration with the library and with Marshanna for their equipment and their ability to record, so they're going to help us record live into the classrooms, and this provides an opportunity for these classrooms that aren't going to be kind of coming together as one big unit of a grade at lunchtime or unit of a grade at lunchtime or recess or things like that, that they're limiting this year, um, as well as the virtual school students that aren't in class with their peers. This gives a chance for everybody to kinda get in on one curriculum at one time and feel that togetherness and that connectivity. So we think it'll benefit, um, kids no matter where they're at in the school system this year. Uh, we do still have our chicken project going on. Again, this is something that the kids actually have at home, that they're doing on their own time. They're raising this project. Um, so in July, we did have an update for them. Normally in July, we would provide a day camp where the kids bring their chickens and we talk about things. We talk about nutritional changes, biological changes. Uh, this year, we aren't doing that so much this summer. We're looking forward to some things, some things coming up this fall that we're gonna get back to doing. Um, but we did provide some nutritional and coop adjustments for those kids at home. Our 4H Youth Livestock Show Team is up and rolling in the show season, so there are, um, shows going on across the state and the United States, um, that we're really excited about. So you can see, here's our two 4H showmen, Lana Hartline and Ella Hughes. And both of these kids, um, these are their practices at home. So a lot of work goes into preparing their animals and their projects at home before they show up at the show. Um, most of the time, I'd like to encourage and teach the kids of, hey, you win at home because you really have to put in the work at home to win when you get to the show. We did travel to a show this past month. In July, we went to Jackson County. Um, so you can see, these are pictures of the girls in the ring and putting their skills to the test. So the top placings for both of these girls, Ella Hughes, um, placed third in her showmanship class and fourth in her market class with her goats Peanut and Pretzel. And Lana placed first in her market class with June and third in the class with Jade. I love their names. So here's a few pictures just to show you guys what it's like outside of the show ring. So when we travel to shows, it's a big family affair. All the families are there. We have adult volunteers, um, kinda rope them along because they're my family, um, and then myself. So we go and we help these kids and you can see these kids learning from these adult volunteers who are Dade County 4H alumni, who have grown up showing livestock, Jeremy and Brett Dyer, and they're here teaching the kids how you prepare your livestock to look the best that they can in the show ring. Um, and of course, we have a little bit of fun. We go out to dinner all together. Um, this was a chance for the girls to enjoy some dessert and a little bit of time outside of Dade County. So as you can see, we're trying to build the youth livestock program here back up to what it was 20 years ago and part of that is also bringing a show to Dade County. Um, so last year was our first opportunity at doing this. This was the inaugural, the State of Dade Lamb and Goat Classic and it was a really good success. We had 110 animals exhibited by people from 17 counties. Um, so this was really a, a shock and an eye opener and really exciting to have last year. And so we're going to continue that this year, um, but we wanted to add something to it. So we're making some more educational components to it where the kids will compete in a stockman's contest where they put their skills to the test at a quiz, at a judging contest, at a fitting competition. Um, so this is a chance for them to win some more awards and have some more educational components behind the show. We also extended it out to a two-day event. Um, we're really trying to promote the idea of this holiday weekend every year to be a chance for families coming all the way from South Georgia or from east of Athens to come here and see Destination Dade. That's the hashtag we've started on social media, um, to really promote Dade County and give people the chance of, bring your camper to Cloudlin Canyon, stay for the whole weekend, enjoy what we have here to see in Dade County because it's different from where else in the state. Um, so this year, it'll be on Labor Day weekend and it is being pretty much led by a group of individual volunteers this year. In terms of hot topics I've seen in the field this month, hayfield management is still continuing. We are into second cutting at this point. Um, just a few folks have been doing that as the window opens up. We're not fully, um, at a point of 50% or anything like that yet. Uh, definitely fruit tree and blueberry questions are coming up, so we've had some, um, weather that has really made these fruit tree orchards susceptible to some different diseases. So I am seeing and getting some calls on that as well as tomatoes. Everyone has tomatoes growing right now and lots of questions on them. Probably the most hot topic of this month, we did do a live with the county in KWN last week, um, on this, so the, the seeds from China, um, that's what we're calling it. We don't really know what this is, uh, but the Georgia Department of Agriculture and the USDA wanted us to get in front of people before they received seeds so they would know what to do. So what this is, is people have not ordered seeds from anywhere. Um, and they're getting a unsolicited package of seeds in their mailbox, um, from either China or other county, excuse me, other countries. So with this, some of them have Chinese language on them, some of them are saying deliberately other countries. We're not really sure the origin of some of these packages. Um, and all of them look different. There's no cookie cutter definition to what these packages look like. Some of the seeds are very different than others. Some of them are coated with something and some aren't. I haven't heard of us having a seed package here to a Dade County citizen. I'd be glad for you to give me a call and let me know, make me aware of this if you have received a package. Um, just give me a phone call. Don't bring it in. I'll tell you what to do in a moment if you do receive a package. But I have been made aware that we did have, um, a citizen in Dade County actually receive an unsolicited package that contained a toy, not seeds, from China. So I don't know what we'll hear of that. That's not my expertise, um, but I wanted to make you guys aware of this situation. So if you do receive seeds, the most important thing is that we don't want you to open that package. Um, don't open them and certainly don't plant them. Instead, place the package inside of a Ziploc bag and seal it up, write your contact information on it and then mail it to this address on the screen, the Tipton Seed Laboratory. At this point, they are going to determine what these seeds are. They're gonna keep them in a contained location in the laboratory to make sure we don't introduce any sort of invasive species or potential issue that could come into our state and our food chain in the United States. Um, just an update on our allied organization meetings and our monthly meetings. So currently, our Dade Grass Class is still at a virtual format, hoping to change that here shortly. Um, the Catalans Association is looking at getting back at some things. I think Beekeepers is staying on hold for now. Um, and then Tree City is not meeting inside in an enclosed environment, but instead, I know they are doing some outdoor things around, um, our community. And this is the last time I'll bring this part up, um, because the deadline is this month. If you want to apply for, uh, the USDA Farm Service Agency's Coronavirus Food Assistance Program, uh, this is for farmers who had livestock or crops that were negatively affected by this pandemic. Um, so this deadline is coming up, August 28th, and you do need to complete this application process through the local FSA office, which is not my office, it's actually located in Lafayette. I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions?
I see a lot of your kids on Facebook posting their pictures with their chickens and they're just really proud of them, you can tell.
They are.
They take it serious.
They do. They sure do.
Alright, good report though.
I think we oughta ship a little cudzoo to China.
Oh yeah.
Ship them some roots.
Alright, is Donna here tonight? Donna Strickland, Historical Society? Okay. Her mother's been really sick. Keep them in, in your prayers. Mr. William Back, uh, Dade County Develop, uh, Dade County Economic Development. William's not here tonight. Alright. Uh, Ms. Jane Dixon, she's with the Alliance for Dade Incorporated, or Daes Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you Ted and all of you commissioners. Uh, I think that I know all of you all personally in some way or another. Uh, now, or don't start that. Okay, so Ted, I'll look at you. Uh, so, I, uh, from tonight and on, a number of the board members of the Alliance for Dade will be attending your meetings. Okay, we want you to see us, we want you to talk to us. When you walk down the street, I want you to know who Dana is. I want you to know who Karen is and what do they do? How are they contributing to your community? As well as you want everybody to know who you are. He does, he really does. He does that. So I want to start off by introducing to you our president. Our president at this time, we'll stand easy and come up here. You, you all probably know her, right? Her name is Kathleen Reed. She is the president of the Alliance for Dade. She is our, our board member. Another member, George Williams. George, you come up. George is one of our board members and he is also vice president, our treasurer. You see, he, when he walks, he jingles, that's because he, he keeps our coins safe, uh, which we don't have any of, so don't worry. So anyway, this is Harry Abel and he is here and his wife is also a director, if you'll come up here Dana. She dressed up for you. Uh, she didn't know she was gonna have to come up here. But Dana Abel sits here also and Deena, excuse me, Deena, it's D E N A, the bar.
Okay, I got you.
Got that, okay. So I've introduced them to you now. Some of them are gonna take part and tell you something and we'll just start with that right now. And if you have questions, please ask them. Don't, remember, if you see them on the streets, say hi, okay? They vote, remember.
Well, when I see you, I never have a chance to talk.
I know.
I didn't say that.
I know you didn't, but it's because you just always wanna hug.
I didn't know that either.
Well, I want to thank you for all the support that you have been to us and for the encouragement and always standing beside us. We now have a very strong viable organization and our goal is to function as a chamber, to reach out to the businesses of the community and to be there as a welcome center for those who are coming into our town that want to know what to do. With this hashtag Destination Dade, we want to be able to be there to guide people as to what to do, where to go, things to see when they come to Dade County. We want people to come here and stay here and spend their money and enjoy our area. And so we're hoping with the Welcome Center and with our Chamber of Commerce that we're going to be able to accomplish that. George is going to give you an update on things that are happening, um, with the, the Alliance for Dade. Um, he's gonna talk a little bit about our logo that we have developed and it was a, it was an effort of the entire board members and it took probably a couple of months of bringing different things to the table, tweaking it here, tweaking it there. We all came together, it was not one person's decision of how to do this because we are working together as a team in the alliance to, to build the community better. And so Harry's gonna give you, as our vice president, a little bit more of the background as to what we've been doing with our Alliance for Dade. Oh, wait a minute, it's not gonna be Harry, it's George, sorry.
Hey, you're tough acts to follow. Well, thanks for having us here. Uh, again, get used to seeing our faces because we are for real and we, uh, we, we all have a great passion for this county and wanna see, uh, businesses, recreational opportunities and the community enhanced by what we do. So you've already met all of our officers, you can, and board members, so you can sit down if you'd like or you can stand behind me, that's okay. We do have our new logo, uh, which you notice at the bottom. It's kinda hard for me to read, so I'm gonna step closer. But it says Business Tourism and Community. Uh, it looks a lot like Trenton's, uh, logo, but you know what? That's okay because when people see logos like Nike or something like that, you recognize it. So when they see that logo, it's gonna look like Trenton or Dade County. So that's what, that's what we wanted. So that's what it looks like. I also, uh, Becca, thank you for putting that slide together for me. Makes it a little bit better than just me quoting what the, what the mission statement is. But we've been doing some exciting things since the last meeting, so I wanted to bring you up to date on that. Obviously, the, we, we now have a logo, uh, but the more important thing is, is we have a young lady sitting in the audience, uh, Brooke Lacy is her name and we hired her as our Director of Operations at the Welcome Center. And as of Monday of this week, and she's already making inroads, uh, since Monday, the Welcome Center is now open. Uh, we haven't had a full-blown grand opening yet, but it is open for business and we are beginning to put information together, uh, i.e., uh, what are the hours of restaurants in the area for people when they stop in or where are their, uh, places to stay or that kinda thing? So that, she is hitting the ground running. So Brooke, stand up and we can say hi to you. Thank you for coming on board. Um, we are open Monday through Friday. The next step is we're going to actually open for several hours on Saturday and we're looking for people, either interns from maybe Covenant College or from the high school that we can have to staff the, uh, the operation on Saturday. Because I think, uh, one thing I've learned about spending some time at the Welcome Center, we've painted it and done a lot of work in it, uh, is that that's a hub of activity around the middle of the day. And I think we're gonna, we tried to center our hours around that so we could take advantage of that flow of traffic. So, uh, when you have a chance, stop in. I mentioned at the last meeting, we haven't planned our grand opening yet, but we will, we will plan something in the near future. We're also working to launch our website. Uh, we'll have a brand-new website for the Alliance and that'll be ready by the end of the month. Uh, in fact, my wife usually attends these meetings with me. She's at home working on that, so, uh, as we speak. So I know it's gonna be done by the end of the month. Uh, early in September, we're working on a membership program, as I told you, and we're gonna call our members investors, uh, because we think becoming a member of our organization is actually an investment in not only their businesses, but in our county. Um, and we're planning, uh, this came up the other evening at our board meeting, is we're going to have a luncheon kickoff meeting for this. Uh, I don't know quite how we're gonna do that yet and keep social distancing in mind, but we're, we're working on those plans. Another plan we have on the horizon is, uh, we're gonna plan on, uh, we're planning on phase, uh, actually sponsoring the Business Expo that takes place in December. Uh, I know Nathan Wooton has worked on that and we're gonna meet with him and take over the planning of that and, uh, we'd like to have that be a successful event, uh, for Dade County. Uh, one other thing that we've been working on, uh, and I'm just about done, um, is signage. Our signage, uh, needs to be improved. We need signage taken down. We're gonna come to the city council meeting and talk about it, so it'll be planned, planned for that, Alex. But, uh, we need help with the state signs, uh, because when you get off the interstate, it gets pretty hard to find and most of the signs we have still direct us to the train depot. So, uh, we, we need to fix that and we are working on that. Uh, again, I want to thank you for your time. Uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those while we're here.
Any questions? Okay.
What are your signs gonna say? What's your, what's your signs gonna say? Are they gonna say Alliance for Dade this way or?
No, we'll, we'll have visitor's center or it'll, it'll actually be related to getting tourists to come to the, come to the Welcome Center. Yeah.
So to say tourism?
Yeah.
Are you still gonna relate to Chamber name? You know, I noticed, you know, you, you're maintaining that and I know there's a reason for that, but.
Yeah, we're, we have it on the door right now, uh, and it's, I, I would say in the long-term, it's gonna stay there. Uh, don't know at what point, once people get comfortable with knowing who the Alliance is and figuring out that it really is the Chamber of Commerce, uh, then I think we can lose that name. But in the meantime, we're gonna try to blend that together.
Need to, because a lot of people, you know, if they're from, you know, Oregon or wherever, you know, they, if you, if you Google and you wanna find out about a place, usually you go in for the Chamber, you know, and pull it up.
I think what I want to assure you guys of is that the fact that that Chamber and the functioning of the Chamber is nationwide. So that's really something that can't necessarily go away because when somebody wants something, that is exactly what they search for. They don't search for Alliance, they search for a Chamber. Now, what we also want to assure you of is that, that it's, the functioning of that is not gonna go away, not, not one bit, because that is why we're here. And Chamber is Commerce, they go together. A Chamber is a group and you have Commerce, which is the actual activity. So you have a group of people doing that activity in the Commerce for the business. So I can assure you that is not going to go away. How exactly it's going to be phrased and the terminology exactly is, is, uh, you know, in the, in the developing stages of tweaking that, but the actual idea of that Chamber of Commerce will not go away. It will not.
Good answer. Yep, good.
Hey, thank you for your time.
I've got, uh, something, I'm also, I'm the treasurer, they didn't know I was gonna say anything, but you probably are interested in money, right? Where do we get money and what do we do with it? Uh, well, we've been thankful for the ARVIC money that we've received from the city. That's been helpful. And we use a, a bookkeeping piece of software called Wave Apps. It's like Quicken, except it has a nice feature. You can give people view access. So, I've given the city clerk view access. Anybody on the commission wants view access or anybody else, you're welcome to it. I think it's nice to be transparent so you can see what comes in and see how we're spending the money. The other thing, George mentioned our website. We've got two of them, DadeChamber.com, and the one his wife is diligently working on. It'll be really slick. It's called AllianceForDade.com. The neat thing about DadeChamber.com right now is we post a link to all our meetings. We meet the first Monday and the first Tuesday, and the third Tuesday at 6:00, a Zoom meeting. You can click on that link. It has the password. You're welcome to join us. If that doesn't work out, we also publish all the meeting minutes on that website, including the committee reports. So, if you want to know what have we been doing, what are we thinking, what kind of decisions did we make, take a look. It's all right there. So, thank you so much.
All right. Any questions for Harry? Okay, thank you.
Kathy's not done.
Sorry. I just wanted to add on those committees that we have. You do not have to be a board member to be on our committees. Now, our board members are on our committees, but you do not have to be a board member to be on our committee. So, it gives that far-reaching out there into our community where you don't have to attend those meetings. You can meet with your small committee outside of that and still have a part of that to be able to be a part of the community and have your input heard, and then you can help steer us and give us direction, and we can better meet the needs if we know who those people are that want to serve on those committees and what their strengths are. When you bring those strengths together, you have force. So, we are bringing people together with the force of the committees, and those committees, the chair of that committee comes and reports to the board meeting. So, our board meetings are not a bunch of just chatting, chatting, chatting. We actually are, we get it done, and we have our agenda, and we get through that, and the chatting, chatting, and the developing handles in your committee, and then that comes. But just so you know, anybody out there can be a part of the committee, and that's the way we want it to be because we want to service our community.
Okay. Appreciate it. That's good information. Appreciate all the work that y'all are doing and have done. Let me move down to number four. This is 4A, our monthly financial report presented by Becca tonight.
Okay. Here we have the account balance report as of July 31st, 2020. Our general fund had a balance of $1,023,755. Our general fund certificates of deposit had a balance of $1,2,494 for a total general fund balance of $2,026,250. Our federal asset fund, U.S. Treasury, had a balance of zero. Sheriff's Special Fund, a balance of $3977. The Drug Abuse Education Fund, a balance of $38,072. The Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund had a balance of $26,738. The Victim Assistance Fund had a balance of $1,495. The Jail Fund had a balance of $49,900. The Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice, had a zero balance. And Employees' Flexible Spending Account had a balance of $30,768. And our Paywall Account had a balance of $40,724. Our SPOS Projects Account had a balance of $99,220. And our SPOS Debt Services Account had a balance of $1,731,949. On the next page, you will see our general fund balance report. Our revenues for the, actual for the month of June 30th, so our year-end, was $594,359.21. Our monthly budget for June is $639,412. So, we were actually short $45,053.68. Our year-to-date for the whole year, our actuals was $10,694,168. We had budgeted $10,715,000, so we are short $20,831. The next page is our expenses for actual for June 30th for the month was $1,087,619. We had budgeted $995,882, so we're actually over budget for that one month of $91,737. Year-to-date, though, actuals is $10,381,971. We had budgeted $10,715,000, so we're actually under budget by $333,029. The next report is your local option sales tax report showing for several years, but our July collection is $169,751.97. And SPOS, sorry, it's very hard to go back and forth. Let's see. And the final report you'll see on the screen is our year-to-date tax collection for fiscal year that should say 2021. No, 2020 is right, never mind. We had budgeted a total for 2020. This will be our final report on 2020 as well. It was $4,771,900. We had collected year-to-date for the full year, $4,683,813.80. So, we were at 98.15% collected for the budget.
Good.
And that's the end. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report that's presented. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is read.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
And call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you, Becca. Good report. All right. Robin, if you've got anything, any legal issues you need to talk, bring for us. Okay. Unfinished business we are out there, and new business. All right. The reading of the minutes of the last month, of last month's regular meeting and any special call meeting will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance of minutes public record and available for review in the county commission office. Minutes are included in our consent agenda also. At this time, I will ask Becca to go over consent agenda, and after that, I'll entertain a motion pertaining to that. Becca.
Okay. We have approval of the agenda as amended to add the authorization of the CARES funding and the abandonment of Lifestyle Lane. We have the approval of the previous meeting minutes. We have the approval of the review of the Personnel Status Report. We have approval of the proclamation of Purple Heart Day of the American Legion Post for August 7th. We have the approval of appointment of members to the Special Use Permit Board, which is Resolution R-2720. David Young for District 3 with a term that expires December 31st, 2023, and Chris Bradford for District 4 for a term that expires December 31st, 2024. Did I say what board it was for? Yes, I did. Okay. And then we have the approval of the RFP results for the countywide property reassessment and evaluation. This goes to McCormick Solutions for a total proposal of $68,500. Okay, let's see. We have the second and final reading of Ordinance 070220, amending the ABC ordinance to permit Sunday package sales of malt beverages and wine for off-premises consumption. We also have the second and final reading of Ordinance 080620, amending ABC ordinance to permit Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption. Then, we had a motion to authorize the county executive with the approval of any other commissioners to approve and execute contracts and other necessary documents for the purchase of goods and services qualifying for funding and reimbursement under the CARES Act. And we also have the abandonment of Lifestyle Lane. It was determined that Lifestyle Lane has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purchases served by it, or that its removal from the county road system is otherwise in the best public interest. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Anything, Robin, you need to correct on that? I'm, you know, she's done a good job. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Anything, Lamar, you want to add? Phil? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Call a vote. Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. All right. All right. Anyone want to come up and talk to us tonight? Give you five minutes to come up and discuss whatever. Anyone in the audience who want to talk to us? Feel free.
I want to remind everybody tomorrow is the last day for early voting.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. 2:00. Now, they close at 2:00 tomorrow, and so, if you want to come in, then the actual next Tuesday, coming Tuesday, will be the day that you go to your precincts and vote. So, you know, if you're in Trenton tomorrow, just want to, in fact, I need to do that. Walked by it 100 times. I need to go and vote. But anyway, just come in and vote. There's not hardly ever a line. Don't take but a minute to come in, and there's not a lot on the ballot, but it's very critical. Your vote counts more so than ever because in a runoff election, you know, one vote can cost the election, one vote. So, your vote does count.
You might want to make a mention of the New Salem Mountain Festival is going to be canceled this year.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's been in the paper. I think I've, I don't know if it's been in the paper. I've seen it on Facebook. Yeah. A lot of festivals this year, they're not having it and all, but anyway, but as Lamar just said, if y'all didn't hear, the New Salem Mountain Festival, right, Rodney? Y'all cancel it. And so, but anyway, just appreciate everyone being here tonight. Had a good crowd considering, you know, and appreciate everyone out there tuning in. Y'all got anything else you want to bring up, commissioners?